Welcome to Mississippi State University and our IHL meeting today. I call this November meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Institutions of Higher Learning to Order. Dr. Keenum, thank you and your staff for hosting us so graciously yesterday and today. Special thanks for the reception and the dinner last night. Mississippi State is truly an exceptional host, and I appreciate all that Dr. Keenum and his fine staff have done to welcome us here and make sure that everything works very smoothly for us. Trustee Cunningham is joining us virtually today. Good morning, Trustee Cunningham. You're supposed to say good morning.
Let me find this button. Good morning.
You're like me. If I don't have a secretary or a child or a grandchild helping me, I'm lost. Thank you. We're glad that you're able to join us remotely. Before we begin, I'd like to take a point of personal privilege and point out to everyone something they should do today as they exit the building, and that's you should look at the outstanding tribute to our own trustee Hal Parker, which is in this building, where he was previously an alumnus of the year. And it's truly outstanding, as is Mr. Parker. We appreciate his service here and all he's done for IHL and Mississippi State University. So trustees and IEOs and others who are participating, if y'all would remember and speak into the microphone so everyone can hear you and those who are participating remotely can do the same thing. Trustee Parker, would you please provide an invocation?
Thank you, sir. This morning, I have Justin Pygott with the Fellowship of Christian Athletes of Mississippi State and also Jason Stoker, who is an ambassador for FCA.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here. A couple of things. Many of you may know FCA, Fellowship of Christian Athletes. It's been around since 1954, and it's evolved in many ways since then. And y'all may know us for providing events, sharing the gospel, or providing bibles, or small group Bible studies, or one-on-ones, or things that happen on campus, the huddles that happen weekly. Those are who we are, and that is what we do. But I wanted to read a few snippets of just what has happened this semester, just briefly of stories of things that we experienced and that we're a part of on a daily basis, of other things that we do that are not technically in our job description, just so you know about us. Here's some things. One was helping a player through a purchase of a car. Premarital counseling with an athlete and his fiancee, walking with a coach through a past experience of getting fired and dealing with the shame that he felt. Daily walking through every area of the building, speaking and checking on those who live behind the scenes, those in the cafeteria, ladies who do the work behind the scenes in operations, equipment people, training staff, praying with a trainer that dealt with a significant injury on a player. Daily checking on and talking to players who have had season-ending injuries. Often on Friday, bringing breakfast to those in the equipment room and in the training room. Daily speaking to every student trainer, equipment person, letting them know how important they are. Sitting down with a coach and not talking about the sport, but checking in on their family and letting them know that their family is important to us. Writing notes of encouragement, providing a meal after surgery for a player. Traveling to a hospital with a player who broke their neck. That was recently at a high school that we serve. Encouraging an athlete that just went through a breakup. Supporting a coach going through marital problems. Supporting a coach walking through challenges with an athlete. Encouraging an athlete whose family's house just burned down and giving them clothes and shoes and being a part of that. Providing team meals, especially for lower-budget sports, to help build team chemistry and to bless them. Providing team-building activities. Supporting an athlete who's battling suicidal thoughts or try to take their life and getting them to the resources that they need. Walking with an athlete who wants to live in sexual purity but struggles with others when they make fun of them because they want to wait until marriage. Walking with athletes who have extreme anxiety when they play sports at the college level. Stepping in as a family for athletes that are far away and really far away from home. Being a safe place to hang out when the season becomes more than they can handle. That is just a few things that we get to do as we serve these campuses for these coaches and athletes. All this doesn't stop when the athlete and coach leaves. Many of us stay in touch with transfers or check in on coaches that move on to a different job. This is family. This is what we do. It is messy. It is very messy, but it's worth it, and it's beautiful. And it's for all athletes, coaches, and staff. This is FCA on a college campus. And so on behalf of FCA in Mississippi, I just want to thank all of you for letting us serve your campuses. This is a trust. Thank you for trusting our organization, and this is not something that we take lightly. So, thank you.
When Mr. Parker asked me to get the chance to pray, I began to just think through, how could I pray for y'all? How could I cover you? And so last night, I went through face by face and the Board of Trustees, just praying for you, your family, your spouses, your kids, your grandkids, your businesses. And I think about you leading these eight institutions across our state. And did a little research. There's over 85,000, y'all knew this, I didn't, 85,000 students that make up these eight institutions. You add the faculty and staff, it's probably well over 125,000 people, that you get the honor and the blessing, the privilege to lead. And I just want to say thank you for that. And what a weighty thing, though. And so just thinking about wisdom, that's really the word the Lord put on my heart. I want to read a couple of verses and just pray for you. This is out of James 1, starting at verse 5. It says, "If you need wisdom, ask our generous God, and he will give it to you. He will not rebuke you for asking. But when you ask him, be sure that your faith is in God alone. Do not waver for a person with divided loyalties and is as unsettled as a wave of the sea that is blown and tossed by the wind. Such people should not expect to receive anything from the Lord. Their loyalty is divided between God and the world, and they are unstable in everything they do." And so as I pray this morning, my prayer for you is that God would give abundance of wisdom and discernment to you, but also pray that your loyalty would be to Him alone, not the things of the world and all the things thrown at you, but your loyalty would be to Him alone. So let me pray for you. God, I thank you for these men and women that make up this room. And Lord, if I'm just being honest, walking in this room, I feel so insignificant with a group of leaders like we have in this room. They are the brightest people, not only in Mississippi, but across this country and this world. The leaders that sit in this room have more influence than I could ever imagine. But God, I also have such a privilege and an honor and a duty. And I think about the 85,000-plus students that lean to these leaders, God, to guide them and to guide the shaping of the generations that come after them. And I think of the decisions that have to be made, the hard decisions that they have to make, and God, I can't imagine the weight that they carry daily. And so, God, I just pray in the name of Christ, God, that you would bring wisdom beyond anything imaginable. God, I pray discernment would just be so clear to them, that, God, when hearts truce there, they would be united as a group. They'd be united in a way that, God, they had never imagined because they're united first and foremost in you. And, God, I think about this verse in James, God, and it speaks clearly that if we walk in the things of this world, God, that wisdom will be a thing that we lack. And so, God, I pray for a godly wisdom, God, godly character. God, I pray for protection. God, leading these universities. God, there's so much that's happening in our world today. God, I pray for just safety of students, for mental health. And, God, I just pray over this meeting today, God, that you would just anoint every conversation that would happen, and God, just be magnified and glorified, and your name would be made much of in this room today through these incredible men and women that have given up their time to serve this state. And so, God, let them not take it lightly, but, God, I pray you give an abundance of wisdom to them and sustain them in the work that you've called them to, in Christ's name. Amen. Thank y'all.
Thank you, guys, and that's a great reminder to all of the many groups that we have that help our students and our faculty and staff and serve our communities that are affiliated with our universities. You know, the outreach of universities is much more than any of us really can imagine until we stop and look at it. I do appreciate FCA and my good friend Coach Daryl, who I've been able to serve with in capacities in my church. So at this time, we have several Student Government Association representatives and officers here today, so we welcome each of you. Glad to have you with us. If y'all would please step up to the microphone by the camera so we can get a good picture of you, for one thing, and so we can hear you, if you'd tell us your name and your office and the university that you're here representing today.
Good morning.
We can hear you. Thank you. And Jackson State's done a good job telling us what y'all major in, because I know student government's real important to you, but your major's more important to us. So please tell us that, too.
If God be for you, who can be against you? Greetings, I am, of my time as father, a senior elementary education major, having from the small but powerful seat, a favorite of the spirit, and I am honored to serve as a 68th Student Government Association president and God's favorite HPC, all four states.
Hi, I'm Kevin Lamb. I am the president of University of Mississippi, over at campus, major in film and an emphasis in marketing.
Good morning. I'm Jack Jones. I'm from the University of Mississippi, where I serve as ASB president, and I am a senior public policy leadership.
Good morning. My name is Anna Idi. I'm from Tupelo, Mississippi, and I am the ASB president for the University of Mississippi Medical Center, and I'm in my fourth year of dental school.
Good morning. My name is Ethan Wilkins, and I get the opportunity to serve as a Student Government Association president for Mississippi University for Women, and I am a biology major with a minor in chemistry.
Good morning. My name is Xander Hall, and I have the privilege to serve as the Mississippi University for Women Student Government Association vice president, and I'm a junior elementary education major.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Cameron Cummings. I am a senior from Huntel, Alabama, and I am majoring in software engineering with a focus in cybersecurity, and I am the Student Association president of Mississippi State University.
Good morning, everyone. I am Lea Johnson. I have a senior criminal justice major from Simpsonville, South Carolina, and I currently have the honor of serving as the Student Government Association president at the University of Southern Mississippi.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Vivian Hale, and I'm a senior psychology major from Mandeville, Louisiana, and I have the privilege of serving as the president's chief of staff at the University of Mississippi.
Thank you all very much for joining us today, and we appreciate all you do to work with students on our campus and help advance their interest. Has everyone had the opportunity to review the October 16th as well as the November 5th minutes that have been included in our materials? If so, is there a motion that we approve the minutes? It's been a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second? It's been a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, nay. Trustee Cunningham?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, I invite Dr. Keenum to the podium to share some insights about Mississippi State University. Welcome, Dr. Keenum, to your university. Thank you, President Ovetree, and good morning, Board of Trustees, and my fellow IEOs, and all of our other wonderful leaders in higher education to Mississippi State University, to our Mill Conference Center. It's a great honor and privilege to be able to welcome all of you to Mississippi State. I, too, President Ovetree, enjoyed last evening, our reception and our dinner together, and again, we're honored to welcome all of you here. It's hard to believe this is the November meeting of the IHL Board. It just seems like, and I know my colleagues can attest to this, that semesters go by so quickly. It seems like only, you know, yesterday that we were welcoming everyone to campus at the start of the school year. In fact, in August, I had the privilege of welcoming more than 100 new faculty members to our university ranks at our faculty orientation. We also held multiple move-in days. Move-in days are a very exciting time here on our campus, and we take more than a week to move in all of our students. More than 5,000 students actually live in our student housing here on our campus. Our sorority life and Greek life, attorney life, has been a real exciting time for us as well, and it was this summer when we had our sorority recruitment, panellanic recruitments. And our numbers and participation in panellanic have gone up tremendously over the last several years. We set yet another all-time record. And this year's sorority recruitment was very special, again, another record, and it was, we do it in August. And Bid Day is a huge day on our campus when our young ladies find out where they will be, what sorority they'll be a part of. This year was so hot, we had to move it inside to the Humphrey Coliseum, and it was a wonderful, exciting occasion for all of our students here who participated in that. And then first day of classes, again, on August the 20th, and that's always an exciting time. And one of the things that we've started a tradition here is I go down into the plaza next to our Student Union, and I greet students as they're going first day, first thing, first class for many of our new freshmen here, greet them and welcome them. Of course, a lot of photographs and a lot of happy faces, but again, it just seems like yesterday that we were beginning all of this, and now we're preparing for our Thanksgiving break and end of the semester. But that's what we do, and it's for these students and all these young people that we serve. That's what we're all about, and it's an exciting time for us and an exciting time for me, and there's a lot of momentum here. And speaking of momentum, here at Starborough, we have a lot of momentum in Meridian, Mississippi as well. We were blessed to have so many wonderful partners who help us with our mission in Meridian, the Riley Foundation, the Phil Harden Foundation, the Broadhead Foundation, the Montgomery Foundation. These are foundations who believe in our vision, our mission, and what we're trying to accomplish to serve the entire state, but especially east-central Mississippi and Lauderdale County and Meridian. And we're very blessed to have all of the wonderful support that we receive, and that has enabled us to have a very highly successful Master of Physician Assistant Studies program at our campus. This coming January, we will be welcoming our sixth cohort of physician assistant students. We've graduated three cohorts, and this graduating class of 2025, we're very proud of them because we had a 100% pass rate for the National Board Exam for all of our graduates of our PA program, and we have achieved full accreditation for our PA program. Very thrilled about that. We also have achieved full accreditation for our nursing school. In this past August, we graduated our very first graduating class of nursing graduates with the Master of Science in Nursing degree. And I want to say thank you again to the board for approving us to have a physical therapy program that we will be bringing to Meridian in the next several years. It will be quite a while, but we're going to work aggressively to bring that program to our campus. And I'm also proud of our Division of Education and the work they do in Meridian. They've recently opened our Mental and Behavioral Health Clinic in downtown Meridian, serving that community and also affording a wonderful opportunity for training for our students who are pursuing degrees in counseling and mental health services. And in January, we will be welcoming accreditation site visit from the American Psychological Association for accreditation for our Doctor of Psychology program that we award in Meridian. And for many of you, we hosted you there on that campus for your board retreat a year ago in the wonderful, beautiful Riley Center. Just recently, the Riley Center was named Venue of the Year by the Mississippi Tourism Association, and we're very proud of that facility. Beyond Meridian, we're also proud to join state and local officials back in August and our wonderful partners with Keesler Air Force Base to break ground on the new Mississippi Cyber and Technology Center in Biloxi. That was in August. This new center will be the headquarters of the Mississippi Cyber Initiative, which we lead with our government, military, law enforcement, and other academic partners. And it was an honor to be with Governor Reeves, other state and local officials, and the Keesler Air Force Base leadership to mark the start of this wonderful new program that will serve cybersecurity training for the entire state of Mississippi. In addition to our growing academic and service efforts, our research portfolio is strong and growing. Our annual research expenditures are climbing towards $350 million. We've long been a leader in cybersecurity research and academic programs, as well as high-performance supercomputing. As many of you may know, we've been ranked as high as number four in the nation in supercomputing capacity in academia, and we will soon be adding $20 million of new supercomputers in the upcoming year to our campus. And these new additional systems will obviously accelerate the work that we're doing in supercomputing, and they will be located in the newly completed High Performance Computing Data Center in the Thad Cochran Research, Technology, and Economic Development Park. We're also expanding our research in data science and artificial intelligence and developing academic programs that prepare students to lead in these emerging fields. We've launched highly successful undergraduate and graduate degrees in data science and artificial intelligence. Of course, we want all of our students, regardless of their major, to have an understanding of AI, because AI is just a fact of life for all of us today. So we're offering more than 50 courses directly related to AI across 13 different subject areas. We're excited about where we are with enrollment this fall. We set yet another all-time enrollment record this fall with 23,563 students. That's 413 students above where we were this time a year ago. We continue to remain the number-one choice of graduating high school seniors who go to a four-year school in the state of Mississippi. We're also the number-one choice of community college students who transfer to a four-year institution in our state. 64% of our undergraduates are from the state of Mississippi, and we've seen our enrollment grow 10 of the last 11 years. We're also making important progress with our graduation success rates. Our six-year graduation rate has climbed from 60% in 2021 to 69% in 2025. These are our iPad numbers. And I'm proud of the work we're doing in our student success initiatives on our campus and all that we've implemented to help our students get to the finish line. We want every student that comes to Mississippi State University to have an opportunity to succeed and earn their degree, and we're going to continue to work as hard as we can in those efforts to enhance these graduation success rates. And it's clear that students and their families see a tremendous value to a degree from Mississippi State University. And you can see that degree and how it impacts our students because of what the successes they have after they graduate. Our latest career destination survey from graduates who finished in May of 2024, 95% of our graduates indicated they had a career-successful outcome. That means they had a job or they were in a graduate program within six months of graduation. Of those students who graduated from Mississippi State and went to work, that was 73% of our graduates went directly into the workplace. 54% of our graduates who went to work stayed here in the state of Mississippi to begin their careers, and 90% of our graduates who went to work indicated that their employment aligned directly with the degree that they received from this university. That indicates that employers value our degrees and are hiring our graduates to do the work that they've been trained to do here at Mississippi State. And for that 27% of the graduates who did not go to work after they graduated from our university, they went to graduate school. They went to medical school, law school, or other professional graduate programs, and 72% of those students stayed here in the state of Mississippi to continue their education. Our graduates are seeing a strong return on their investment in a Mississippi State degree, and the people of Mississippi are also seeing a strong return on their investment in our university. A recent study from NSPARC found that we have about a $4 billion annual economic impact on our state's economy. NSPARC found that for every $1 invested from the taxpayers of our state into Mississippi State, $25 of income is generated directly back to the state of Mississippi. That's a tremendous return on taxpayers' investments in just our university. And you can say the same thing about each of these other universities who are represented here. We're all tremendous economic drivers of the state of Mississippi. Of course, the greatest impact that we all have is through our graduates, and we're working hard to see that more Mississippians earn a degree, have a great job, and more importantly, have a great life. And it's clear also that our alumni and our friends and partners, they value the work that we're doing here at Mississippi State, and you can see that in the record-setting fundraising that we have been able to achieve. Our MSU Foundation has raised more than $260 million this past fiscal year. That's an all-time record, not only for our university, but for IHL. Our university's endowment now stands at more than $1 billion. These funds are supporting priorities such as, well, student scholarships, helping to make our university more affordable to attend, endowed faculty positions. Our donors are very, very generous in these areas, and we're very deeply appreciative. As our academic programs and our research portfolio grow, our buildings and grounds must also grow. That's a tremendous return on taxpayers' investments in just our university. And you can say the same thing about each of these other universities who are represented here. We're all tremendous economic drivers of the state of Mississippi. Of course, the greatest impact that we all have is through our graduates, and we're working hard to see that more Mississippians earn a degree, have a great job, and more importantly, have a great life. And it's clear also that our alumni and our friends and partners, they value the work that we're doing here at Mississippi State. And you can see that in the record-setting fundraising that we have been able to achieve. Our MSU Foundation has raised more than $260 million this past fiscal year. That's an all-time record, not only for our university, but for IHL. Our university's endowment now stands at more than $1 billion. These funds are supporting priorities such as, well, student scholarships, helping to make our university more affordable to attend, endowed faculty positions. Our donors are very, very generous in these in these areas, and we're very deeply appreciative. As our academic programs and our research portfolio grow, our buildings and grounds must also grow. We completed a number of major projects over the past summer and just in time to begin the start of this year. In early August, we celebrated the opening of the Perry Food Hall on our campus. We had to take this facility offline for more than a year. That building is 124 years old. It is a beautiful, modern facility today, and our students love the Perry Food Hall. We also welcomed 412 students into Azalea Hall, our newest and largest residence hall back during August. Azalea includes a new campus dining facility, a storm shelter, and the Lucky Day Tower, the new living and learning community for our Lucky Day Scholars. And that was made possible by a tremendous gift from the Lucky Day Foundation. Construction was also concluded on our new Jim and Thomas Duff Center, the new home of the Department of Kinesiology and the Mississippi Institute on Disabilities and its renowned Autism and Developmental Disability Clinic. The Duff Center was made possible by a generous gift from the Duff family, and we're grateful for their investment in our students, our faculty and staff, and all of the many communities that we serve. We also, just on Tuesday of this week, we completed and had a wonderful ribbon cutting for our new Randy J. Cleveland Engineering Student Center. This is a student center that will serve our renowned Bagley College of Engineering. And by the way, the Bagley College of Engineering is our largest college on our campus, and it is growing tremendously. We desperately needed this new space to serve all of our many engineering students for many years to come. We also broke ground just this month on the Nancy Fairlink Laminitis Research Center at our College of Veterinary Medicine, again, thanks to a very generous gift from Nancy Link. This new center is part of a major renovation and expansion of our vet schools' facilities. And we were excited about the new pickleball complex that we opened at our Sanderson Center just recently. This pickleball, these pickleball courts were a very important priority of our Student Association, and we were thrilled to be able to bring them to our campus. We've also initiated a project to build the Billy W. Howard Senior Indoor Practice Facility. And we anticipate this facility to be completed by 2028. And again, we're very much appreciative of a major gift from the Howard family of Laurel, Mississippi, that have helped make this project possible. And speaking of football, we recently were pleased to host the SCC Network and SCC Nation on our campus earlier this month. They set up right in the junction to broadcast the Paul Feinbaum Show on that Friday, and then that next morning, the SCC Nation was live in our junction with a live concert from Hardy that was in the junction. It was a wonderful, exciting time for our fans and our students, and just a lot of fun. And also, that very same weekend, that Friday night, we were in Duty Noble at Duty Noble Field for a very unique event, our first ever Diamond Dog Classic. This was an alumni game that featured Mississippi greats such as Will Clark and Rafael Palmero. They coached or managed the two teams, Thunder and Lightning. And we had just wonderful players who performed, great Mississippi State legends. It was really a who's who of current and former Major League players that participated. And our stadium was packed. I mean, packed with more than 10,000. I think it was closer to 15,000 people who were here that night. We love baseball at Mississippi State University, and so it was a wonderful event. The incredible momentum on campus also includes the work that we're doing throughout our larger community. Our MSU Foundation announced our new Crossroads District. They announced this back in August. This district will connect the west side of our campus with the historic Cotton District in Starkville. It will include a new Marriott Tribute-style, beautiful new hotel that will be the anchor for a mixed-use, multi-year, multi-phase undertaking. And we just recently had a groundbreaking on Hotel Madeline, which is what we will be calling it. This new hotel and the entire Crossroads District are going to be something truly special and unique for our community. And we are grateful for all of the support that we have received, not only from our local leaders, but also statewide leaders who've helped us make this possible. In addition to everything that we have going on in the Crossroads District, we now have a new hospital here in Starkville. We're excited. Baptist Health Systems purchased our local county hospital, and it is now the Baptist Memorial Hospital, Ottenbach County. Having a strong local hospital is critical to our recruitment and retention efforts for both employees and our students. We're very excited to have this new healthcare system here in our community. We're also building on the success of our relationship with the Starkville-Ottenbach School District. We're proud to be the home of the district's Partnership Middle School, which is located on our campus. And we recently signed an MOU for the planning of a new Starkville High School that will be on a land adjacent to the Partnership School. We're just thrilled. This is an A-rated school, and to be able to partner with them, and our students have classrooms in these schools, in the middle school, and will in the high school. It is a unique learning experience for our students who are in the College of Education. It's a wonderful partnership. And we're also excited about all this going on in downtown Starkville. If you haven't had a chance to go downtown on your visit, it's a major construction site right now. And so all that's going on in downtown, renovations, beautification, will tie in wonderfully with all that we're doing in the Cotton District and the Crossroads District. Our campus and our community will be connected seamlessly from Lee Hall to City Hall along University Drive and Main Street. Our students, their families, are excited about these innovative projects and beautification and all the amenities that are coming with these new exciting developments. Having such a vibrant and growing community with so much to do is one of the best recruiting tools that we can have for our university and for our community. Well, Mr. President and board members, I think that's all the news I have for you this morning. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present to you, but I also want to thank each of you for your commitment to service to our state and to higher education. You have to give of yourself a great a great deal to do what you're doing. And I thank you very much for all you do for this university, but more importantly, for all of our universities and higher education. I want to wish all of you here today a very happy Thanksgiving with your families, a Merry Christmas as well, and may God bless you and hail dear old state. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Keenum. We certainly appreciate all you and your staff do here at Mississippi State for Mississippi State University and for our IHL system. Dr. Pierce, at this time, would you introduce our next presenters? We're going to have this presentation in lieu of us having a separate focus on a part of IHL because this is a critical part of IHL.
Yes, Mr. President. Trustee Ogletree. This morning, we have Dr. Brian Prescott and Dr. Sarah Pingel from the National Center for Higher Education Management Systems, often referred to as NCHMs. So yesterday afternoon, the board heard from them about the mission of the institution, the cost of operating the institutions and the programs, and gave you some context there. So this morning, they will offer you some options to consider for allocating funding in the state of Mississippi. Dr. Prescott?
Thank you very much. Thanks to President Ogletree, to the board, to Dr. Rankins for this opportunity to come and speak to you this morning. I'm going to introduce a little bit about the project that we do and that we're engaged to do, a little bit about our organization, and then my colleague Sarah Pingel will talk in more detail about some of the proposals. I also want to thank Dr. Keenum and his team here at the Mississippi State University for their warm welcome and for a whole set of events over the past couple days that have enabled Sarah and I to get become familiar, more familiar on a personal level with some of the trustees and the presidents and some of their key staff members. So we've really appreciated that opportunity as well. So without further ado, a little bit about NCHMs. We have an awkward acronym and a long, long name that it stands for, the National Center for Higher Education Management Systems. We are a small organization out of Boulder, Colorado. We have about 11 staff. We are a nonprofit organization. We work towards bringing post-secondary education opportunities for all, strengthening communities, and serving the public good. And we do that by bringing data and evidence to bear on strategic decision-making for post-secondary education, working with institutions, government, systems like the IHL, and other audiences. We've been doing this kind of work on funding models for at various times during our 55 years of history. We also do work on other public policy matters in post-secondary education. This project, oh, the agenda. As John mentioned, we have had the good opportunity to spend time with the trustees, but also with the chief financial officers and the chief academic officers and the legislative liaisons yesterday with the of the eight institutions and gathering information and perspectives from all of them, and we thank you for their contributions so far. We laid out the case for a funding model development over the course of the last day. This morning's conversation is really going to be about conceptual options that the state may choose from, that the trustees may choose from for allocating funding to the eight institutions going forward. As we see it, we're very early in this project that we're going to take on, but we want to give you some indication of the kind of of options that are there. So our project overview, we just started last month on this project, but our plan is to create the development of a funding model for the IHL institutions and allocation model from the system. And we would, we want it to be able to incentivize performance and to be effective in periods of both growth and decline. We heard from Dr. Keenum about the growth that's happening in Mississippi State. As most people in this in this room know, that is not the story across all of the IHL institutions, and so this funding model needs to be fitted for both cases, growth and decline, particularly at a time in which higher education across the nation is likely to experience a decline in the number of traditional age students looking, seeking higher education experience. Our project's going to run from last month through the middle of the summer, early summer. We will, we do expect to do a considerable amount of stakeholder engagement over that period of time. We're going to gather an awful lot of data, and we'll be on the campuses of each of the eight institutions to talk to key members of the community. We'll build, we'll do some draft modeling of what a funding model option would look like, as well as under various different assumptions. We'll produce a final model for the IHL's consideration, along with a report that will detail the findings of our work and recommendations going forward. There's a couple of slides I want to warn the trustees and others who were with us yesterday that I'm going to repeat, just because we got a broader audience today and more folks in the room, so I want to make sure that we've, that folks are familiar with where we're starting from. So the first, the first of those slides that I'll repeat is really why a funding model and why now? And it largely has to do with the fact that we are looking for ways in which we can connect higher education more intentionally to the workforce requirements and the societal requirements that we that we see. And so there's a couple, there's a study there from the Georgetown Center on Education and the Workforce, which is sort of the definitive organization that estimates the work, the educational demands of the future workforce. And for Mississippi, it suggests that 63% of the jobs just six years from now that are coming open, that will be coming open in Mississippi will require some form of post-secondary education or training beyond high school. This doesn't necessarily mean a degree, but it means that the folks will have to either get some kind of training, short-term credential or other thing after high school, or some incumbent workers will have to seek out some kind of rescaling, upscaling as well. Additionally, you have an organization in, or a set of organizations in Mississippi that have launched a program called Ascent to 55% that has set goals for the state of Mississippi. These are as close to state goals as we've seen, but it's, they, their plan is that Mississippi will increase post-secondary attainment in, throughout the state to 55% by 2030 and to 60% by 2035. As we approach trying to solve this problem, those goals are really important, and we are looking for, we're trying to create an approach that really centers the needs of the state and the students in the development of a funding model. So with that set of goals, the funding model should be designed to create incentives to drive institutions of higher learning to achieve those goals. Not that they aren't already doing that, but they should be rewarded for trying to fill in gaps that are currently exist and so forth, so that the state of Mississippi and the students are the primary beneficiaries of that work. In the process, we believe it's really important for the funding model to ensure that students from all backgrounds throughout Mississippi and in all parts of Mississippi are able to take advantage of the opportunity to achieve post-secondary education and be ready for the workforce needs of the future. And the funding policy that the Institutes of Higher Learning system controls is one of the most important policy levers that exist to ensure that the IHL institutions are incentivized in the most appropriate way, each of them with their own different missions to achieve those goals. And we, we think it's vitally important, a large part of the presentation that we made yesterday, was to illustrate just how different each of the institutions within the IHL is from one another in terms of the kinds of students that each of them serves and the programs that they offer, which are across a variety of different fields and different compositions, as well as other factors that are important to the communities in which each of the institutions is situated. And so when we think about building a funding model that's responsive to that, we think it's really important for that funding model to recognize those very important and crucial differences in mission. And I don't mean the mission statements. Those mission statements are important, but they're designed to be aspirational, inspirational, a big tent. And what we're talking about is the mission as reflected in who's being served with what programs, how those programs are being delivered, and those other features. And when we, we pulled some preliminary data early in this project, we identified substantial differences across the institutions in that way. There's a lot of different programs. There's not a lot, there's considerable overlap, but when you look at the aggregate pictures of what the institutions are providing, there's an awful lot of complementarity going on. The fact that these programs all cost different amounts to deliver, a doctoral-level engineering graduate costs more to educate than a lower-division general ed humanities course, for example. We need to recognize that there are important and vital differences in the cost structure of these institutions. Likewise, a student who is a first-generation student from rural Mississippi, who is a Pell Grant recipient and may not have as strong an academic preparation, doesn't have the same cost to educate to the same level as a student who's at the top of their class graduating from one of the high schools in suburban Jackson, whose parents and grandparents have all been part of the post-secondary education community throughout their lives. And we also recognize that each of these institutions really make very different contributions based on those things to that overall state goal of 55%. Implications that arise from this is that the institutions, each of them, do not have the same tools to adjust to the changing conditions we're likely to face going forward. Mississippi is expected to see a decline in the number of 18-year-olds who are graduating from high school, much like other states that are nearby and across the country. There is at least a projection of a stable amount of adult workers, incumbent workers and others who may be, who may have demand for higher education. But the numbers of the students that we're used to serving, you've heard probably the term enrollment cliff, that is likely to decline overall. So we need to be thoughtful about how the different institutions are able to adjust to. are able to adjust to those changing conditions and build a funding model that allows each of them to thrive in that context. And then finally, that institutions across the IHL are very different in the diversity of their funding sources. And you think about a diverse retirement portfolio that allows you to be resilient in the case of different changes in the environment. Similarly, for public nonprofit institutions, their diversity of revenue sources helps them, those that have more are more able to adjust to the changing conditions as well. And particularly notable here is that the institutions with less flexibility in that regard around how they're pricing and what kind of students they're able to attract and compete for, they're more dependent on the appropriations or the allocation model that the IHL uses and the impact of that model will be more significant on them. I'll close by just quoting your own policy, IHL trustees, that you have a policy on the books that talks about your duty and responsibility to create a stable, understandable and predictable adequate funding model to meet the needs of the different institutions in the state, and the one that provides accountability and demonstrates adequate funding level and incentivizes performance. And when we finish our work at the end of this process, we hope that we've helped you identify an approach that will allow you to do that as you confront the quite different conditions that higher education institutions are working on and likely to work on in the future. With that, I'm going to turn over the bulk of the presentation to my colleague Sarah Pingel. I'll be sitting over here, ready to answer any questions that come our way at the end of our presentation. And thanks for your attention.
All right. Good morning, everyone, and thanks to Brian for that introduction. Thanks to the board and to members of the audience and institutional leaders that are here today and to the student government representatives that are here today to talk more about the funding model, really consequential work for Mississippi and for students. As Brian said, we've been under contract for, you know, three, four weeks so far, but we wanted to walk through today some of the options that could be on the possible list of models that the board may consider as they undergo this work to look at the funding allocation model. So just to be clear about what we're talking about and what we're not talking about, perhaps, about 40% of the money that the state of Mississippi invests in higher education runs through this allocation model. Those dollars come to this board and then allocated across the eight institutions. The big question of this study and the work that we are undertaking now is how do you determine how to do that, right? And so this is, of course, important and highly consequential work for each of the institutions that will go through. All states have to answer that same question, right? So you're not unique in your position as board members or institutional leaders or even as students in being part of this policy that has such great implications for your campus and for the work that you do. And states do this in a few different ways. I'm going to go through a few of those today, and I know it's before 10:00 a.m. and I'm the one with the charts and I'm the one with the numbers and the dollar signs and all those things, so bear with me. I'm going to go through a few of those options today in concept and introductory mode. What is it? What does it do? Why would you choose it? Why would you not choose it? And eventually, this will build towards a direction that I think Brian and I and the rest of the team at NCHMs would push for this board to continue to consider and where we would like to focus our work moving forward. The first of those options is called BASE PLUS. Second is simple per FTE funding. There are some models that states use that are based on all performance criteria or performance metrics. And then there are hybrid models, which kind of mix all of these things up together into one little salad, right? You've got mission, performance, base funding altogether into one. It's important to note that NCHMs created a model of this type for IHL in 2012. That model was used for a few years, is still run internally for informative purposes, but is not used to allocate funding actively at this point in time. Right now, what is in place is a BASE PLUS model. And to be clear, that's how a lot of states allocate their funding for higher education, whether it's at the two-year or the four-year level. What a BASE PLUS model does is it looks at the allocation from the year before. It considers the economic conditions in the state, how much money is available to spend, and it applies either increases or decreases to that amount across the institutions based on some kind of criteria that may change from year to year. The way that the IHL board has been doing this now is a BASE PLUS model based on increases intended to close gaps in faculty salaries with other SREB states. So that's really been the priority of the funding model so far, is a base allocation support plus bringing all the institutions up closer to SREB averages in terms of faculty salaries. A BASE PLUS model, as I said, they're deeply popular and they have some advantages, right? They can be simple and easy to understand, administratively relatively simple, although John might disagree with me as the one who administers it. It can be tied actively to state budget conditions and political preferences as well, but you may also see some limitations to using this kind of model. And I think that's what brings Brian and I and the work of NCHMs here today, right? You're living some of these limitations right now. BASE PLUS models, one of the biggest risks of them is they can risk building in historic funding levels that really don't match current needs, right? So where did the base come from? Who decided what that base amount was? When did that happen, right? Often, those questions are ones that are really, really difficult for states to answer. Nobody really knows. It happened a long time ago. We're not really sure. So you can see the loss of intentionality behind how the base amounts were determined, right? The new funding that may or may not be available for the PLUS portion of a BASE PLUS model, it's really a moving target. It's unpredictable. Sometimes it's not enough to incent any changes on the part of the campuses towards performance or towards whatever that priority may be. And so it's possibly a weak incentive. And it may or may not be directly tied to statewide goals. So raising faculty salaries is, of course, like an important and laudable goal to pursue. And there are other goals on the table for all Mississippi students as well in terms of educational attainment, degree completion, workforce connection and things like that, which may also want to be part of a funding approach for this board and for the institutions. So there are some advantages. There are some limitations. I think those limitations, as I said, are really what bring us here today to start talking about possible changes to the model. The second type, as I run through these different options for redesigning the funding model, is one that could just be based on a per FTE-type formula. So this would be, again, something that is simple and relatively straightforward, where you might take the, some sort of dollar amount that's determined for every full-time equivalent student, multiply it by the enrollment at that institution, and then you would arrive at that institution's allocation. Or you could do it perhaps based on credit hour accumulation as opposed to student count, since, excuse me, which would give another approach to do essentially the same thing. Through this model, the dollars follow the enrollment, right? It's important to note that no states do this right now for their four-year public systems, and only, it's very, very rare at the two-year level. Brian and I were putting our heads together this morning and trying to think through, and maybe there's, you know, one or two examples in the two-year sector where this is done. No states do this in the four-year sector. And I'll talk through a little bit about why that is. So there are some advantages here. It's simple. It's easy to understand. It's predictable. And it accounts for one really important cost driver at the campus level, which is enrollment, right? There are some major limitations to using this type of model to fund higher education at the four-year level. It ignores and doesn't adequately acknowledge the cost drivers behind those enrollment numbers, right? There could be a point at which larger institutions can reach economies of scale that impact their costs per student to educate that wouldn't be accounted for in this type of model. It doesn't account for the programming that institutions are offering, right? So Brian said earlier, a doctoral student in an engineering class probably has a different cost profile to the institution than a student in, you know, a freshman transition course or something like that in their first year. Those are two different things. It doesn't account for the preparedness or the characteristics of those students as they enter the campus. Doesn't account for the context of the campus, the scale, local needs. Many of the institutions within IHL provide services to their local communities. We heard some of this in Dr. Keenum's presentation, outside of educating students, that are still vital services to those communities, which wouldn't be accounted for in this type of model. And it's largely disconnected from state goals. You can have students enrolling in institutions that do a great job at completion and increasing attainment and workforce need, but those things wouldn't be directly incentivized within this type of model. How many graduates are being produced and what kinds of fields? Are they staying in Mississippi? Are they working in Mississippi? Are they thriving in Mississippi? Those would all be only very weakly incentivized through a model like this. There are also some really key questions that this board and that other stakeholders would need to wrestle with if this is what you would want to move forward with. So who determines the per amount? Do you do it based on what's available to spend in the simple division problem? Do you do it based on people, students enrolled, or based on semester credit hours? Does that per amount actually reflect what it costs to serve students, or does it only reflect what the state has to spend? Those are two different questions that would need to be engaged with, right? Is enrollment the only performance metric that would really be of value? I think there are others that are worthy of consideration by this board and by other stakeholders as we consider the funding allocation model. And again, this type of model doesn't do anything to fund or incentivize non-credit-bearing activities across the campuses that are so vital. A third option that could be considered is all-performance funding. So essentially, performance funding is an approach that's in use in many states across the country, usually to allocate only part of the money that the state invests in appropriations for each institution. There are a very small number of states that do this for a majority or most or even all of their allocations to higher education. And the way it works is essentially institutions would gain points by participating and succeeding in certain activities prescribed by the state, so, or by the board. Degree production, degree production in certain fields, employment outcomes or something like that, momentum points for students persisting from their first to their second to their third year. These are types of factors that are often considered in performance funding models. Institutions would gain points for that. They would then be calculated as a share of those total points, and then that would constitute their share of the total appropriation. So in this way, the metrics are really largely defining what each institution would receive every year. There are some advantages, again, and some limitations to using this type of approach. If it's funded at sufficient levels, it may actually incentivize growth in performance or changes in institutional behavior, if it's funded at sufficient levels. It can cultivate data-informed decision-making. It makes pretty clear, as long as the performance indicators don't change every single year or too frequently, right? It can make pretty clear for institutions the directions in which the state would like to see them move and can, in that way, can tighten the connection between the funding and the state goals. And if the metrics are appropriately differentiated, they don't have to be the same for every institution, they can really help institutions live into their missions in certain ways that really make the most sense for them. There are also some limitations with this type of model. It seems counterintuitive, but sometimes these models can actually penalize the improvements that the state wants to see. And that can happen when the funding amount put into them is limited. So an institution could grow in terms of its share of points from year to year, but if there's not enough funding put into the model, or if another institution grows even more than they did and gets even more points than they did, that institution wouldn't actually see any kind of financial reward back from the model for that growth that they produced, right? So there are some ways in which, there's some controls and things like that can be put, that could be put in place, but it needs to be carefully done to ensure that each institution is rewarded for the meaningful progress that it's making along the way. These models can also stifle sometimes risk-taking across the campuses, right? So do we set up this new program? We're not sure. If those startup costs that are associated with doing that are going to produce meaningful changes that would ever actually be rewarded in the performance funding formula. And it's really hard to know how much money would really be needed to run the formula at an appropriate level to incent the types of behaviors that the board would like to see from the institutions. So this is the all-performance funding. As I said, very few states do this in terms of 100% of their funding. What most states do is a hybrid. They kind of build together these things together. So there are some questions here that I have too that you can consider around performance funding, things that would have to be wrestled with if the state were to design some type of performance funding model. How do you address scale, capacity? How do you design the metrics? How do you standardize their weighting? A whole host of things that would need to be figured out if all or part of the funding in the state of Mississippi were to be allocated based on performance. So as I said, most states use a hybrid model. I don't intend for you to be able to read everything on this slide, but this is essentially a graphical representation of the model that was created by NCHMs in 2012. And it is one of those hybrid models that I referred to earlier, that takes a little bit of the best parts from each of these different approaches that I've discussed and puts them together into one comprehensive model that provides funding for each of the institutions. The circle on the left, there are two main pieces that kind of comprise the funding. The circle on the left is student credit hours by discipline. So they're separated out into those higher or lower-cost fields, as we alluded to earlier, and then they're weighted appropriately for the types of differences in cost that each of those programs would produce. The right side is outcomes and performance-driven metrics, so things like retention, completion, degree production, employment. And then those are pulled together in a model together, essentially, into this hybrid approach. And then there was also a step taken in 2012 called Stop Loss. Volatility can be helpful to policymakers in higher education, right? Your setting, funding is a powerful tool and a powerful incentive that you have in your toolbox to help institutions move towards reaching goals. Too much volatility can be absolutely disruptive and unhelpful, right? And so there is the stop-loss calculation that was put in to help protect institutions, to be able to serve the students that they have on their campuses, right, when the changes that were calculated would be either big jumps or big losses, to insulate against some of that. And then that would go into the funding allocation across all of the IHL colleges. There are some clear advantages to the funding model, and I'll be clear, like neither Brian or I created the 2012 model. This model predates our time with the organization, so don't feel like we have any sort of personal turf on the 2012 model at all. There are some advantages to what was designed by our colleagues in 2012, and there are some limitations as well. A lot has changed in the last decade in higher education funding, right? So a hybrid model does have that component towards incentivizing performance. Those performance goals can also be highly connected to state goals, which is helpful. It also acknowledges the reality of foundational costs, the cost to keep the lights on in the buildings that are state assets across the entire state of Mississippi that exist, whether or not a student is actually present on the campus, right? It acknowledges the reality of some of those foundational costs and accounts for the variation in cost based on the institution's mission and the programs that it offers. There are some limitations though, too. As I said, a lot has changed in the last decade in higher education funding and the approaches that states are taking to funding their institutions. There wasn't a clear fact-based basis for where the base costs came from in the 2012 model. We have different strategies and approaches to doing that today that we could apply here. The model also wasn't sufficiently sensitive to the changes in mission between each of the institutions, right? So audience, you know, what types of students is your institution serving? How prepared are they for college? What kinds of supports do they need to succeed? It's not sensitive as it could be to those types of things. It also doesn't account for variation, as, you know, as Brian said earlier in his opening remarks, about the diversity of revenue sources that are or are not available to each of the eight institutions. It doesn't account for those changes in tuition revenue at each of the institutions in a meaningful way. And really, one of the biggest challenges, no matter what type of funding model this board or our report recommends, the biggest challenge is bringing it into balance with the other sources. So tuition, student financial aid and the appropriations approach, bringing those into a cohesive and intentional direction together is going to be one of the biggest challenges that we do. And this model doesn't really do that very well at all. And again, the performance metrics, good performance can still sometimes be punished through the model that was designed in 2012. So what we would recommend today is something that looks a little bit different and that actually weaves in this concept of adequacy that exists within the board policy language that that Brian shared. It looks really complex, but it is easier to understand once you kind of walk through it a little bit. This model is essentially predicated on the idea that the costs that an institution faces to provide its services matter, and that the state, together with students, should play a role in covering those costs. I'm not saying that this is exactly how we would measure all of these things in our report or in our recommendation. What I hope that folks see in this is the introduction of these larger-scale concepts that we would want to bring to the discussion in this redesigned conversation, right? So there is a role for foundational funding, the minimum expenses that institutions face to provide any kind of service to any student, right? You can't have an institution without a president, without a CFO, right? You can't have an institution without a campus that has safe buildings for students to come and learn in, right? These are foundational costs that are part of what institutions need in order to be robustly sustained. There are also costs in that fixed cost portion related to the facilities, technology, the personnel that are on campus, again, minimum baseline costs. There are costs that are different for each of the institutions that are variable, based largely on their mission and the types of students that they're serving, right? So the scale of the institution, are we talking about, you know, a 20,000-student university? Or are we talking about a smaller institution? The types of programs that they're offering and the types of students that they're serving, those are also part of the cost picture of each of the institutions. And then on top of that, really important components intended to incentivize performance and outcomes and goals that this board would set for each of the institutions to reach. So there is that performance and outcomes component there. And then the final two pieces on the right side, capacity building and purchase of goods and services, really have to do with some of those services that the institutions are providing to their communities, whether that's municipal services at all corn state, or whether that's, you know, whatever it could be, right? Like different services where the state is purchasing from the higher education institution a service that they're providing to the community that isn't tied to non-credit, that isn't tied to credit-bearing activity for students. So as I said, like this model looks more complex. Arguably, it is more complex, but it's also more sensitive and responsive to needs that students and institutions have moving forward. The other thing this model does is it introduces this idea of cost sharing. And this slide has some examples of how different states, this is another thing that's kind of different in the last 10 years in funding models. This is another thing that states have started to do in order to help their tuition policies act in concert with their state appropriations and allocations policies. So as I looked on the previous slide, you know, we had these ideas around like variable costs, what kind of program, what kind of student. These are costs which conceptually we could consider the state has a role in funding, but also students themselves, through their tuition dollars, could also have a role in funding. And so one of the things that we may talk about as we develop this model is how much of that should be covered by students and how much of that should be covered by the state. So bringing some intentionality to tuition policy and appropriations policy tied together. And there are some examples of here of states that have done this kind of work and the types of targets that they've set, just as a place to start, right? So this idea that there are some components of the model that would be fully covered by the state, other components of the model where tuition would start to play a role. There are also, as I said, performance funding metrics that are included within a hybrid model. It was one of the final pieces I showed over on the right side. In the last 10 years, this is really where some of the trends in performance and outcomes metrics have gone. Yes, there is a focus on enrollment. There's a focus on completion. There's also focuses on retention and progress, making sure that students are retained and they're succeeding as they move through their programs. There are time-to-deGREE, so not just graduating, but graduating within a certain timeframe or graduating on time. More and more states are looking at metrics around transfer student success, so making sure that four-year institutions and two-year institutions for states that are governed together, unlike Mississippi, are rewarded when students successfully complete a transfer pathway from a two to a four-year institution. These are pathways in many states that can be highly productive for students to save money and to receive still baccalaureate-level credentials. There are some states that have metrics to reward degrees in high-demand fields, so an analysis would be done of where the high-demand fields are within the state, or maybe that's already done in the context of Mississippi. Fields where this board wants the institutions to be moving in terms of degree production, and that would be incentivized within the model. And then there are still other states that have the data to be able to link more directly to employment outcomes. Are students working in the state? Are they making a living wage? Are they working in a field that's associated with the degree that they received? These types of metrics are also kind of newer on the fringe of what states are considering in terms of performance. There are many levers within the adequacy framework. And when I say levers, what I mean are opportunities to change some of the formula in order to impact the output of that formula, right? So how do you measure the base funding? In some states, we do this against a peer set of institutions. So, you know, Delta State would only be compared with other institutions that look like Delta State, for example, in order to determine its base amount. There are other states where we've done this against much broader sectors, comparing all the institutions in Mississippi against all other four-year public institutions, for example. Either of those choices are going to have an impact on what the output from the model looks like. So just as an example of a lever. Some work would need to be done to determine what it would cost to maintain buildings and state assets. Historically, most states don't weave those costs into their funding model, and they may or may not ever actually be covered at some point, the cost that it takes to maintain facilities in a safe way for all students to be able to access and use them. If we were to move towards a hybrid model that would fold that in, we would need to make decisions about what levels, right? What types of facilities would be covered? We would need to make decisions about variations in the institutional cost structure based on how big they are, what kinds of programs they're offering, what kinds of students they're serving. And there would need to be a whole host of decisions made around how to treat resident, non-resident students. Should they also be covered within the model? Should their tuition revenues be accounted for separately in the cost sharing, those kinds of things? Decisions around performance metrics, a whole host of decisions would need to be made because there are a lot of levers within the adequacy framework. But we maintain that if those levers are well-understood and the model is adopted, it gives this board a variety of ways, year to year to year, to make those small shifts to be adaptable to the changing conditions that higher education is facing, right? And so having a highly adaptable model like this is something that could be attractive to the board to consider moving forward, where you're not changing your funding model every year, right? You're actually talking about manipulating the certain levers within it and having a more intentional and goal-focused conversation about what needs to change in the model to respond to those current conditions, right? With that, I will leave you with our contact information for Brian and I. We're happy to answer any questions that folks have today, if that's okay with Trustee Ogletree, or to entertain any discussion on this. And again, thank you so much for the warm welcome to Mississippi State. Thank you to Dr. Keenum and to everyone for being here today to engage in this important
Thank you. I'm not going to have questions entertained now, just because of the time that we have. I would ask if you can be available when we conclude. And then we're also going to have an executive session at some point, and if y'all could just be available outside for people to stop you and ask you questions, that way you would have the input from everyone here, but we don't have to delay our time because we could talk about this the rest of today and tonight and tomorrow. And it's very important. It's one of the most important things that we'll be doing. So thank you, Dr. Pingel and Dr. Prescott, for your presentation today.
Chair Ogletree.
Just a reminder, Sarah and I have a flight that departs. We've got to leave by 11:45.
Whenever y'all need to leave, people can catch you now, or you're giving contact information.
That's right.
I've heard you be available, so we'll certainly do that. And I think you've heard them say they're going to be going to all of our eight institutions, so there'll be an opportunity to see them on a particular campus that may be closer to you or with which you may be affiliated. So please participate in that process. Thank you very much. I will, you know, I heard several things now that are very helpful, and we've been hearing most of this for some time, conceptually, but there's certainly an underlying principle that funding models only work if there's funding. And we know one of the very early recommendations they made to us was to increase our state funding. And so we're no different than everyone else in the state that goes to the legislature and asks for more money. And I realize the legislature has a very difficult job of deciding where to allocate resources, but we do have to have sufficient funding. We have to have funding for everything, including our repair and replacement of buildings. Many of our universities have a high percentage of buildings that are on the national register that require a whole different cost level. So this is a very complex topic. I think y'all have understood that, as I'm understanding it more each time I hear a presentation from NCHMS. I would like to say from my own personal experience, just in talking with them formally and informally, they're very experienced, they're very knowledgeable. I think they're the best choice we could make. They can understand and convey complex concepts about funding and funding models. I have confidence in them and I look forward to working with them as we move forward in the future. Next to the consent agendas, are there any items that need to be moved to a regular agenda for consideration?
President Ogletree, I would like to move the real estate consent agenda item number four, Campus Mechanical Improvements Phase Three, to today's regular real estate agenda for the board's consideration due to a trustee conflict.
And there's no vote that needs to be taken on that, so that will be moved and we will consider it in due course. And pursuant to IHL Board Policy 301.0510, I will request that we remove item number one, MSU IHL 205-362, Raleigh Campus Student Housing, for consideration at the next board meeting in January. I'm learning additional information on that. Look forward to hearing that in more detail so we can consider it in a appropriate session as opposed to it being on a consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve this consent agenda as revised?
Certainly.
There's been a motion to approve the consent agenda as revised. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Trustee Cunningham?
Aye.
The motion passes. At this point, we're going to move to the regular agenda. Trustee Hubbard, if you would please present for us the academic affairs regular agenda.
Thank you. Academic affairs is a core item on the agenda. Dr. Casey Presswood will present this information for the board's consideration.
Thank you, Trustee Hubbard. The first agenda, the first item on the agenda is a request for approval of first reading for proposed amendments to Board Policy 518, Adult Degree Completion Program. Complete to Compete, the system-wide re-engagement initiative for adult learners with some college but no degree, helped 4,119 adults complete their degree programs. This program has now ended. Individual institutions would like to retain components of this initiative that were created by Board Policy so that they can administer their own re-engagement initiatives for adult learners with some college but no degree. Changes to this policy include amending the current Adult Degree Completion Program to change references from Complete to Compete to the generic name of Adult Degree Completion Program. Institutions may choose to continue using Complete to Compete as the name of their adult re-engagement initiative, but this change allows institutions to create their own initiatives. The degree program is intended to serve adult learners who have earned at least 90 credit hours but have not completed a baccalaureate degree and haven't attended a post-secondary institution in the past 24 months, based on their last date of attendance. A statement is being added to this section to allow IHL institutions to exercise discretion regarding the hours earned and the length on non-enrollment while maintaining the original intent of this degree program. For example, if a student earned 85 hours before stopping out or has not been enrolled in 20 consecutive months, an institution may determine that this student is eligible for the program. The degree issued by the institutions for this program is called University Studies, and the policy is being revised to include this name. Institutions shall continue to award the University Studies Degree Program when a student completes an Adult Degree Completion Program. On this section, we would be removing references to the C2C Initiative. No changes to the program requirements. Other than removing the reference to the C2C Initiative, there are no changes to the portions of the policy related to financial holds, tuition and fees, delivery format, and repeated courses. The proposed amendment calls for removing the Prior Learning Assessment and Competency-Based Education Section, which will become a standalone policy called Credit for Prior Learning. Board staff recommends approval of this item for first reading.
You've heard the recommendation. I make a motion to approve this item.
There's been a motion to approve item number one. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Trustee Cunningham?
Aye.
The motion passes, and before we move on, I do want to acknowledge Dr. Boyce, the prior IHL staff and prior trustees for their leadership in this program that has been very successful. It's been emulated by a number of states around us, and I do acknowledge that imitation is the most sincere form of flattery, so I thank our group for the leadership they've shown in this and look forward to universities continuing this concept. Go ahead, Dr. Presswood.
The second item on the agenda is a request for approval of first reading for proposed new board policy, Credit for Prior Learning. This request is created, this request is to create a new policy called Credit for Prior Learning. This currently exists as Section 9, Prior Learning Assessment and Competency-Based Education of the Adult Degree Completion Program Policy. No substantive changes have been made to this section. Removing this section from the Adult Degree Completion Policy and making it a standalone policy will allow credit for prior learning to be integrated into any degree programs offered by the IHL institution at the institution's discretion. Board staff recommends approval of this item for first reading.
You've heard the recommendation. I make a motion to approve this item.
There's been a motion to approve item number two. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, to approve item number two. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Trustee Cunningham?
Aye.
Motion passes.
The next item on the agenda is a request from Mississippi State University to add a new center. Mississippi State University requests the creation of the Center for Simulation to be housed at the Riley Center Campus. The purpose of this extensive scope and outreach center is to serve as a dynamic interdisciplinary center that supports the development of clinical skills, communication, critical thinking, and teamwork across multiple health disciplines. The Center for Simulation will consolidate simulation-based education under a single-coordinated structure to enhance efficiency, ensure quality, and optimize resource allocation across multiple health disciplines. The simulation program is fully integrated into the academic unit's curricula, providing critical support for programs to meet accreditation standards and demonstrating competencies required by national organizations. The anticipated annual cost of this center is $582,000, and board staff recommends approval of this item.
You've heard the recommendation. I make a motion to approve this item.
There's been a motion to approve. There's been a motion to approve item number three. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve item number three. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Trustee Cunningham?
Aye.
The motion passes. Dr. Presswood, please proceed.
Last on the agenda, we have several requests to add new academic degree programs. Delta State University requests the creation of the Bachelor of Applied Science in Human Development. This 121 to 123-hour degree program will build upon the Associate of Applied Science degrees. This interdisciplinary program applies up to 45 hours of technical credit toward the bachelor's degree. It includes a 30- to 32-hour general education curriculum, a 15-hour child, family, and advocacy corps that culminates in the nationally recognized Child Advocacy Studies Training Certificate, also known as the CAST certificate. Students will select one of eight 30-hour concentrations, including child studies, family studies, elementary teaching, secondary teaching, criminology, social science, psychology of industry, and integrated human development. This degree program will be offered on campus and online. Graduates of the elementary and secondary teaching concentrations may enter an accelerated Master of Arts in Teaching pathway with up to 12 graduate hours taken during the BAS that supports the Mississippi Alternate Route Teacher Licensure upon completion of the BAS and MAT. The estimated five-year cost of implementation is $410,000 with a potential new five-year revenue of $2.2 million. Alcorn, Mississippi State, the W, and USM offer some of these concentrations as degree programs. Mississippi Valley State requests the creation of the Master of Science in AI and Machine Learning for Biomedical and Environmental Health Systems. This 36-hour degree program prepares graduates for leadership roles in applying artificial intelligence and machine learning to biomedical and environmental health challenges. Its goals are to equip students with the knowledge and skills to address complex problems using advanced AI tools, to promote interdisciplinary research that bridges computational, biology, public health, and environmental modeling, and to strengthen the STEM workforce pipeline in healthcare, biotechnology, and environmental sectors. The estimated five-year cost of implementation is $1.1 million with a potential new five-year revenue of $1.6 million. Jackson State and Ole Miss offer similar programs, but there are no programs with the specific AI, machine learning focus on health and environment. The U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics projects that more than 23,000 job openings in the data science field each year on average over the next decade. The median annual wage was $112,000 in May 2024. Mississippi Valley State University requests the creation of the Master of Science in Educational Leadership. This fully online program prepares educators for principal, assistant principal, and district-level administrator roles in schools and districts. All courses are aligned with state and national standards to ensure quality and accreditation with successful completion leading to the eligibility for the Master of Science in Educational Leadership K-12 licensure number 486. The estimated five-year cost of implementation is $1 million with a potential new five-year revenue of $2.1 million. Delta State, Jackson State, Mississippi State, University of Mississippi, Bellhaven, Mississippi College, and William Carey offer similar degree programs. All are offered in an effort to address the Mississippi educator workforce shortage. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the 2024 median pay for K-12 principals is $104,000 per year. The University of Mississippi requests the creation of the Master of Arts in Global Security Leadership. This fully online interdisciplinary program is designed to equip students for leadership roles in national security, intelligence, homeland protection, and private sector organizations. The program is designed to meet the need for early-to-mid-career education and advanced degrees required for promotion in government and commercial national security organizations. The program is designed to be completed in one year. Four concentrations will be offered: global and regional security, intelligence operations, strategy development, and cybersecurity policy and planning. The estimated five-year cost of implementation is $742,000 with a potential new five-year revenue of $1.6 million. No institutions in the state offer similar degree programs. The University of Mississippi Medical Center requests the creation of the Master of Public Health. The Master of Public Health is designed specifically for medical professionals. Ideal candidates will be students obtaining a medical degree from UMMC or individuals who already hold a medical degree and seek to expand their expertise in public health, as well as first-year medical students interested in pursuing a dual-degree pathway. The program aims to enhance the knowledge and capability of medical professionals in Mississippi, ultimately working to improve population health outcomes across the state. The degree program will be offered online, and in-person courses will also be offered: practicum and experiential learning opportunities. The estimated five-year cost of implementation is $146,000 with a potential new five-year revenue of $1.6 million. Because UMC is the only MD conferring institution, there is no such degree combination offered in the state. Board staff recommends approval of these items.
You've heard the recommendation. I make a motion to approve this item.
There's been a motion to approve item number four. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve item number four. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Trustee Cunningham?
Aye.
The motion passes.
This concludes academic affairs regular agenda.
Thank you very much, Trustee Hubbard. This time, Trustee Stevenson, if you would proceed with the finance and budget agenda.
Thank you, President Ogletree. We have eight items on the regular agenda today. They are contractual agreements from the System Office, the University of Mississippi Medical Center, the University of Mississippi, a bond resolution from the University of Southern Mississippi, and a contractual agreement from the University of Mississippi Medical Center. I call on Dr. Pierce to discuss the specifics of these items.
And before we begin with the specifics, let the record reflect that Trustee Martin and I will recuse ourselves. Trustee Martin will recuse himself from items one and two. I'll recuse myself from items one through five, and we'll leave the room. And Vice President Cunningham will lead the discussion in my absence.
We're ready, Dr. Cunningham.
Thank you. Trustee Stevenson, please present the finance and budget agenda.
I recommend that we take up items one and two together unless a trustee has an objection. John?
Thank you. Item number one is a request from the System Office to enter into a property insurance brokerage agreement with Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services, LLC, related to the system's property insurance program. Gallagher will solicit quotes from the system's insurance, for the system's insurance needs, as well as provide consulting services. The term of the agreement is for five years at a total cost of $880,000. The agreement may be terminated for convenience with 30 days' notice. Gallagher was selected through a request for proposals. Four proposals were received. Gallagher offered the second-lowest cost but was judged as the highest in experienceability and quality. Item number two is also a request from the System Office to purchase workers' compensation excess insurance from Safety National Casualty Company. Arthur J. Gallagher serves as the broker and was selected through an RFP process in 2023. This insurance will cover exposures greater than $1 million. This program is required by the Mississippi Workers Compensation Commission. The policy is for two years at an estimated cost of $800,000. The agreement may be terminated with 90 days' notice. Safety National offered the lowest quote. Legal staff has reviewed these agreements for compliance with applicable law and finds them to be acceptable, and Board staff recommends them for approval.
You have heard the recommendation from Board Staff. I make a motion to approve items one and two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? The motion passes. Bridgette, if you would, please ask Trustee Martin to return to the room.
We're ready, Dr. Cunningham.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Stevenson, please proceed.
I recommend that we take up items three through five together unless a trustee has an objection. John?
Thank you. Item number three is a request from the University of Mississippi Medical Center to approve a product purchasing agreement with Novartis Pharmaceuticals Corporation to purchase radio pharmaceutical drugs used in nuclear medicine. The term of the agreement is for three years at a cost of $13.4 million. The drugs under this agreement are Ludithera and Plavicto, which are qualified as exempt commodities under Mississippi Code. Item number four is a request from the University of Mississippi Medical Center to enter into a new fixed payment schedule with Olympus America to lease endoscopes, bronchoscopes, monitors, workstations, and accessories to perform digestive disorder and broncho-pulmonary endoscopy diagnostic procedures. The term of the agreement is for three years at a cost of $2 million. It may be terminated for convenience with 30 days' notice. Olympus is an approved vendor with a qualified group purchasing organization according to Mississippi Code. Item number five is also a request from the University of Mississippi Medical Center to enter into a fixed payment schedule with Olympus America to lease endoscopes, bronchoscopes, monitors, workstations, and accessories for gastric and pulmonary procedures. The term of this lease is for three years at a cost of $1.5 million. It may be terminated for convenience with 30 days' notice. Olympus is an approved vendor with a qualified group purchasing organization according to Mississippi Code. Legal staff has reviewed these agreements for compliance with applicable law and finds them to be acceptable, and Board staff recommends approval of these items.
You have heard the recommendation from Board Staff. I make a motion to approve items three through five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? The motion passes. Bridgette, if you will, please ask President Ogletree to return to the room.
Thank you, Trustee Cunningham. Before we move on, let the record reflect that Trustee Clark will recuse himself from item number six on the finance and budget agenda. Trustee Clark, as you leave the room, someone will let you know when to return. Trustee Stevenson, if you would proceed. John?
Thank you. Item number six is a request from the University of Mississippi to amend a pre-construction contract agreement with GS Development Services Central, often referred to as GrayStar. The purpose of the agreement is to begin the planning of the development of one or more residential facilities containing 2,700 beds with additional dining space and a 1,500 space parking garage. Under the agreement, GrayStar will begin performing site analysis, site preparation, design, and drawings, a detailed product schedule, retaining consultants developing preliminary construction budgets, and obtaining required zoning and local approvals. Their agreement will end on December 31, 2026, or the execution of a ground lease for the development of the West Rose site. The university may terminate the agreement for convenience by paying a termination fee totaling the actual pre-closing advances incurred by GrayStar at the time of termination. The total cost of termination or failure to execute a ground lease is up to $16.5 million. If a ground lease is executed, the cost incurred will be included in the development costs for the ground lease. The university selected GrayStar through a request for proposals process. GrayStar offered the lowest-cost proposal. Legal staff has reviewed this agreement for compliance with applicable law and finds it to be acceptable. Board staff recommends approval of this item.
You have heard the recommendation from Board Staff. I make a motion to approve item six.
There's been a motion to approve item number six. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve item number six. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Trustee Cunningham?
Aye.
The motion passes. Bridgette, if you would have someone ask Trustee Clark to return. Let the record reflect that Trustee Arrington is recusing herself from item number seven on the finance and budget agenda. Trustee Arrington, as you leave the room, someone will tell you when to return. Trustee Stevenson, please proceed.
John, please continue.
Thank you. Item number seven is a request from the University of Southern Mississippi to approve a bond resolution not to exceed $62.5 million to finance up to $35 million for the renovation of Reed Green Coliseum and up to $27.5 million to refund Series 2013 and 2015-A bonds for net present value savings of no less than 3%. The board previously authorized a resolution for the renovation of Reed Green Coliseum in April 2024. However, that resolution did not provide for the refunding of Series 2013 and 2015-A. Since that time, changes in interest rate now offer nearly $1 million in net present value savings for these series. The Reed Green Coliseum bonds will be paid for by a city of Hattiesburg tax levy of 1% from gross sales from restaurants and overnight stays and provided to the University of Southern Mississippi for this purpose. Continuation of this revenue source is contingent on continuing authorization from the Mississippi Legislature. This was authorized in, I believe, 2019, and it was recently reauthorized through 2030, at which time it'll sunset if it's not reauthorized. So it has one reauthorization already. And also, we passed out this morning the analysis from the financial advisor. This is an update from what the board had in 2024. Should this funding from the city of Hattiesburg not be provided, we're estimating the University of Southern Mississippi still has a debt service coverage of $2.19, which is in excess of our minimum expectations, and this is on page 14 of that document. The Series 2013 and 2015-A bonds will be funded by ongoing athletics and housing operations as they were intended at that time of original issuance. Legal staff has reviewed these agreements for compliance with applicable law and finds them to be acceptable, and Board staff recommends this item for approval.
You have heard the recommendation from Board Staff. I make a motion to approve item number seven.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve item number seven. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Trustee Cunningham?
Aye.
The motion passes. Bridgette, if you would have someone ask Trustee Arrington to return. And while she is returning, let the record reflect that Trustee Clark will recuse himself on item eight on the finance and budget agenda. As he leaves the room, someone will let you know, Trustee Clark, when to return. Trustee Stevenson, please proceed.
John?
Thank you. Item number eight is a request from the University of Mississippi Medical Center to enter into a services agreement with Healthier Mississippi People, LLC, referred to as HMP. This item was added after the board book was printed. We have provided a paper copy at your desk for your review. The purpose of this agreement is to provide personnel in high-need positions, including registered nurses, licensed practical nurses, technicians, and other qualified medical personnel. The term of the agreement is for three years at a cost of $570 million. UMMC is currently in contract with HMP through a five-year contract entered- UMMC is currently in contract with HMP through a five-year contract entered into in 2021 for five hundred fifty million. HMP was formed by the Mississippi, Healthy Mississippi Collaborative, organized under Mississippi Code 3711550 to support and assist UMMC in fulfillment of their mission. HMP was formed to support UMMC with supplemental and flexible staffing in a variety of specialties. This agreement can be terminated with ninety days' notice. Outside legal staff has reviewed the proposed agreement for compliance with state law and finds the same to be acceptable. Board staff recommends approval of the agreement provided that a subject matter expert pursuant to Board Policy 714 is engaged to provide written analysis and recommendations to the board for its review and any appropriate action prior to the effective date of this agreement.
You have heard the recommendation of board staff. I'm making a motion to approve item number eight.
There's been a motion to approve item number eight with conditions stated. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Trustee Cunningham?
Aye.
Motion passes. Bridgette, if you'd have trustee Clark please return.
That concludes the finance and budget agenda.
Thank you, trustee Stevenson. At this point, trustee Rader, if you'd please present the real estate regular agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are six items on the real estate agenda today, including consent agenda, item number four, that was moved to the regular agenda. I'm going to ask Brad Rowland to present these items for the board's consideration.
Please proceed.
Mr. Martin has to recuse himself.
I need to let the record reflect trustee Martin is going to recuse himself, and as he leaves the room, trustee Martin, someone will tell you when to return. There, please proceed now. Thank you.
Thank you, President Ogletree. Item number one is a request from Mississippi State University to initiate a project Rosenbaum Building renovations and additions and to appoint LPK Architects as the design professional. The project includes the additions and renovations to the Alfred Rosenbaum Building, along with renovations within the adjacent Robert B. D. Jr. Building. Currently, the Riley Center is downtown Meridian, is home to the School of Nursing, School of Healthcare Professions, along with Interprofessional Simulation Center. The project budget is five hundred thousand for design fees only and is being funded with university-designated funds. Board staff recommends approval of item number one.
You have heard the recommendation. I make a motion to approve item number one.
There's been a motion to approve item number one. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Trustee Cunningham?
Aye.
The motion passes. Bridgette, if you'd have someone have trustee Martin return. And if the record would reflect that I'm recusing myself from items two and three, and Vice President Cunningham will lead the discussion in my absence.
We're ready, Dr. Cunningham.
Thank you, Bridgette. Brad, please proceed.
Thank you, trustee Cunningham. Item number two is a request from Alcorn State University to initiate the project, the wastewater treatment facility improvement phase two, and to appoint WGK Inc. engineers and surveyors as design professional. This project is intended to address critical infrastructure failures, including multiple facility leaks and pump station deficiencies that compromise operational reliability for the entire campus community. The improvements will ensure regulatory compliance, reduce the frequency of sewage overflows, and maintain uninterrupted water treatment operations through the upgraded monitoring systems and emergency backup capabilities. The project budget is a little over one point five billion dollars, is funded through external grant funds and university general funds. Board staff recommends approval of item number two.
You have heard the recommendation. I make a motion to approve item number two.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and properly second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion passes. Brad, please proceed.
Thank you, trustee Cunningham. Item number three is a request from Mississippi State University to enter into an agreement with Brasfield &amp; Gorey LLC, C-Marks, for construction manager at risk services for the Leo Sil Jr. Football Complex renovations and additions. As you will recall, the board approved in June of 2025 MSU to enter the C-Mar process instead of the design bid bill. The project has three phases, an A, B, and C, that will likely overlap during construction. Phase A is a relocation of utilities and realignment of natural grass practice fields to make way for a new indoor practice facility. Phase B includes the Billy W. Howard Senior Indoor Practice Facility and connections to the existing facility. Phase C will include renovations within the existing facility. The contract includes preconstruction services and construction services. The C-Mar's preconstruction service fee will not exceed four hundred sixteen thousand eight hundred seventy dollars. For construction services, the university shall pay the C-Mar stipulated construction services fee equal to five point one zero percent of the option sum for construction services. The project will be funded with a combination of athletic self-generated and donated funds. Legal staff has reviewed this item for compliance with state law and found it to be acceptable, and board staff recommends approval of item number three.
You have heard the recommendation. I make a motion to approve item number three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion passes. Bridgette, if you would, please ask trustee Ogletree to return to the room.
Yes, sir.
And let the record reflect that trustee Clark is now recusing himself from items number four and five on the real estate regular agenda. Trustee Clark, please leave the room. Someone will let you know when to return.
I see trustee Clark has left the room. We're all getting our steps in today, so Brad, if you'd please proceed.
Thank you, President Ogletree. Item number four is a request from the University of Mississippi for approval of the revised exterior design of the Phi Delta Theta House. The project consists of renovations in addition to the Phi Delta Theta House. Phi Delta Theta wishes to modify the approved exterior design by extending their balcony areas on the West Road facade. Remaining facades remain unchanged. Project budget is seven million dollars and is funded by Phi Delta Theta. This was the rendering that the board had previously approved, and as you can see, this is the modified version with the balconies that are being submitted. Board staff recommends approval of item number four.
You have heard the recommendation. I make a motion to approve item number four.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve item number four. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Trustee Cunningham?
Aye.
The motion passes. Brad, please proceed.
Item number five is a request from the University of Mississippi Medical Center to modify the scope of the UMMC Colony Park Site Utilities Roadway Improvement Project to include landscaping. The original scope of the project included site grading, electrical, and site utilities and only included landscaping incidental to roadways and utility lines. UMMC has sufficient funds remaining in contingency for the project to provide for landscaping of the facility and requests to add this to the scope of the project. The project budget and the funding sources will remain the same. Board staff recommends approval of item number five.
You have heard the recommendation. I make a motion to approve item number five.
There's been a motion to approve item number five. Is there a second? A motion and a second to approve item number five. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. If all in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Trustee Cunningham?
Aye.
The motion passes. Bridgette, if you'd have someone ask trustee Clark to return. Thank you, trustee Rader. That concludes everything for you, and thank you, Brad.
We are.
You have one other item?
We have the one that was moved from consent.
That's right. Thank you. Please proceed.
Please.
Does this affect me? Okay. Then I'll let the record. You can tell I'm not quite up to speed on this one, but let the record reflect that I'll recuse myself from this consideration, and trustee Cunningham will preside in my absence, and y'all can tell me when to come back.
We're ready, Dr. Cunningham.
Thank you, Bridgette. Okay, Brad, please proceed.
Thank you, trustee Cunningham. Consent item number four that was moved to the regular agenda is a request from Jackson State University to increase the project budget for the campus mechanical improvements phase three project from a little over five point eight million to a little over seven point three. In addition, JSU requests approval to add Senate Bill 3065 laws of 2019 for an additional funding source to accommodate the budget increase. Phase three of the project includes the replacement of air handler units, split systems, controls, pumps, and other related HVAC components in the Lee E. Williams Athletics Assembly Center, Rose E. McCoy Auditorium, H.T. Sampson Library, Robinson Building, and F.D. Hall Music Center. The proposed budget is a little over seven point three million dollars and will be funded with a combination of state funds and JSU funds. Board staff recommends approval of consent item number four.
You have heard the recommendation. I make a motion to approve consent item number four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Trustee Cunningham, this concludes the real estate and regular agenda.
Thank you, trustee Rader. Bridgette, if you'd please ask trustee Ogletree to return to the room.
Yes, sir.
All right, trustee Rader and Brad, I believe that's completed everything now. Thank you for your help and work. Dr. Rankins, if you'd please present the administrative policy regular agenda.
Thank you, President Ogletree. Item number one is a list of the proposed 2026 meeting dates and locations for your consideration. You will note that the May meeting will be held on the campus of Alcorn State University, and the November meeting will be held on the campus of Jackson State University. Board approval is requested for this item.
You've heard the recommendation from the commissioner. Is there a motion to approve item number one?
I make a motion.
There's been a motion to approve item one. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? If you're hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Trustee Cunningham?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes.
President Ogletree, this concludes the administration policy regular agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Rankins. We'll now proceed to the informational agenda. Dr. Rankins?
Do trustees have any questions regarding items on the information agenda? If not, thank you, President Ogletree.
Thank you, Dr. Rankins. Are there any additional items to be considered by the board at this time?
Mr. President, I have an item that I'd like to add to today's agenda.
Yes, sir.
IHL policy provides that the commissioner and chair of the board's search committee shall prepare a list of members for the search advisory constituency, which must be approved by consensus of the board. As the chair of the board's search committee, I make a motion that the selection of the search advisory constituency members be added as an additional item on today's agenda.
So the next item is the consideration of the additional agenda items, and as we consider that, this requires an affirmative vote of two-thirds of the trustees present. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, if not, all in favor of adding this matter to today's agenda would say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Trustee Cunningham?
Aye.
The motion passes. Then please proceed, trustee Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr. President. The commissioner and I recommend the following individuals to serve on the Jackson State University Search Advisory Constituency. First individual is Dr. Nicholas J. Hill. He's the current dean of the College of Business at Jackson State University. Second individual is Dr. Candace L. Jackson. She's currently serving as the secretary of Jackson State University Faculty Senate, and she's the associate and associate professor of the Department of English and Foreign Languages and Speech Communications at Jackson State University. Third individual is Dr. Deidra L. Wheaton, Associate Dean, College of Education and Human Development at Jackson State University. Fourth individual is Brigadier General Robert Creer, U.S. Army, retired, Advisory Board, Jackson State University Development Foundation. Last individual is Mrs. Patrice Edwards, current president of the Jackson State University National Alumni Association. I make a motion to approve these five individuals to serve on the search advisory constituency to assist the Jackson State University Board Search Committee in vetting of applicants in an appropriate manner as determined by the board's search committee.
Thank you, Dr. Cunningham. You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of adding these five individuals to serve on the JSU Search Advisory Committee according to the terms of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Trustee Cunningham?
Aye.
Motion passes, and we look forward to working with those individuals in that capacity. Is there any other business for us to consider at this time? Okay, hearing none. Our next scheduled meeting will be January of 2026 at the board office. If a call December meeting is needed for anything that we need to address prior to January, we will make that announcement and hold that meeting as appropriate. Okay, at this time, we need to determine the need for an executive session. Is there a motion that we enter into executive session to... Is there a motion that we close the meeting to determine the need for executive session?
Show my booth.
There's been a motion to close the meeting to determine the need for executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Trustee Cunningham?
Aye.
The motion passes. Then, other than our IHL trustees and IHL staff, anyone that's not needed for the executive session should leave the room or disconnect at this time. Visitors are welcome to wait in the hallway. Trustees, if you'd give us just a minute to make the appropriation, ensure the appropriate participants are connected. Thank you.